Thank you, Madam Speaker. Good morning. Madam Speaker, I'd like to make a move to set aside Bill 421 until we have BBMR and DOA and GFD present here.
Thank you. No objections, and so ordered. Moving on to substitute bill number 434. The primary author is Senator Panglinen, but we're going to have the chairperson, who heard the bill, then to introduce it.
Yeah. Thank you for --
To speak on it.
Yeah, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill 434-31 as substituted by the Committee on Rules, Federal Form and Micro-nation Affairs, Human and Natural Resources, as introduced by V.C. Panglinen. I move that this be placed in the voting file with some discussion.
I may proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, my committee had the privilege of presiding over this bill, and we had a public hearing, and we did file a committee report, which is -- can be found in the Guam Legislature's website. And this bill, introduced by V.C. Panglinen, seeks to require that anyone providing research and statistical information to the government of Guam, that those reports remain in strict confidence. And I want to rise to thank the sponsor of this bill for recognizing the importance of keeping this kind of statistical information with the agencies that use these informations in the course of developing these reports. Certainly, the reports will be made public, but what the sponsor's intending to do on page two, it says that "a new language that notwithstanding any provision of law. All information, statistics, or data obtained pursuant to a request by the government and submitted voluntarily by individuals, organizations, companies, or other private entities and not otherwise compelled by any law, rule, or regulation shall be held in full confidence and not subject to the open government law." And it sets out some requirements for the director of that agency to include new language that went through my committee and is supported by the author: confidentiality pledge, confidentiality of information, disclosure to partner statistical agencies, and even provides for fines and penalties. And it provides additional duties of the Bureau. And so, Madam Speaker, I ask that our colleagues recognize the thinking behind this kind of bill, and I ask for unanimous consent. Thank you.
On the motion? So, hearing none, then? Anyone like to speak on the motion? Senator Yamashita.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I -- perhaps throughout the day and until Monday, when we hope to vote on our measures, I'll do more reading on this, but I just can't understand why we would want to keep research and statistics not subject to the open government law. I wonder -- I mean, I -- again, I'm just saying this for the record because I -- any data, I think -- any data that's going to drive a policy decision or a program decision, I think everybody should have access to. And so, I'm just putting that out there. I'm curious, but I will sit down and go through the committee report and read that further. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator Mabini, on the motion?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just an initial review, review of the bill as it stands. My only concern would be related to the previous speaker. In any form of research, certain information, you know, yes, definitely should be held confidential, and definitely regarding identifiers. And I know -- and any good research would provide that form of mask, but sometimes in research, information is waived, or that authority is waived by a person if they want to be -- if that should be included. So, I'm trying to find in this particular bill where that would be discussed. And, you know, in any good data, information as close to accuracy is needed in order to make any form of determination and analysis. So, I asked the author or the sponsor to explain how this is going to be addressed because in the interest of preserving the interest of using data for good analysis, this is something that we need to seriously consider because we don't want to hinder the progress of research and the intent of research. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Mabini. At this time, I will entertain a Speaker want pad on the main motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 434, of course, amends Section 1107, Chapter 1, Title 22 of the Guam Code annotated. In order to ensure that information supplied by individuals or organizations to an agency for statistical purposes under a pledge of confidentiality is to be used exclusively for statistical purposes. Additionally, the information supplied by these individuals, like ourselves, and think of the census that was just recently done, and organizations will not be disclosed in identifiable form of any -- to any unauthorized person or to be used for any other purposes other than statistical nature for which it was supplied. This legislation is necessary in order for the government of Guam, through its agencies, seeking data and information from the community to gain a higher level of participation in the surveys and other requests for information by government agencies to compile more accurate and complete government reports through increasing the confidentiality of the information gathered from individuals and organizations. And I say, think about this as well with the census, because many times, people don't want to give the truthful information for fear, then, that some -- that the confidentiality will not be there, that somehow someone will be able to disclose some of the information that's provided by the individuals. Furthermore, the information voluntarily provided by these individuals and organizations to government agencies, such as the Department of Labor, which is, again, the census, will be exempt from the open government law to increase the confidentiality of the data and information. So, just think, if then, we've just turned in all that information from all individual households, and then someone's going to say, using the open government law, say, "I would like to get that information about what -- how it looks, how -- what the income level is of certain individuals or certain communities." And I think when we give that kind of information, just like any statistical analysis is to be done when we go out and get information, and especially with research, and I understand my two colleagues here, because they've been through the process of collecting data, ensuring, of course, that confidentiality is assured, to make sure that we do not have any due unrest, burden, or pain, or whatever it is, to the individuals. But more importantly is that when we give out the information and we put our statistical information, we actually only place a number to an individual. So, if so-and-so has participated in the survey, that will be number, you know, participant number one, and so on down the line. And you deal with that, you know, specifically that way, not divulging any kind of private information. And lastly, if any officer, employee, or agent of an agency of the government of Guam willingly discloses such data or information in any manner to those not entitled to receive it, that there is this penalty, and the penalty, of course, is $5,000 to be paid by that officer, employee, or agent. So, I understand, of course, the concerns, and I know I remember the first time when I read this, I thought the same thing as well, but then that's when I remembered, of course, specifically the one, I think, that we're concerned about the most because it's personal information about, you know, income, household, and all that, that normally you just don't want anyone out there, other than those who are sworn to -- I'm sorry, sworn to not divulge any of the information. I'm sorry, I made a mistake because in page five, instead, if you look at it, the fine is not more than $5,000, but it really is $1,000, or not more than one year ago. So, I do stand in support of the bill. And I hope that what I shared with our colleagues, that maybe it might be able to explain the bill further. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Any other senators wish to be heard on the bill? If not, then I invite the chairman to --
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I thank the previous speaker for providing additional information, and in the legislative findings and intent, and throughout the bill, it's very clear that it's only information that this government is receiving, statistical, that's statistical in nature. And so, in the committee report, Mr. Speaker, I called your attention the testimony from the Director of Labor that basically says the essence of the bill is quite simple. When the Department of Labor, Bureau of Labor Statistics requests businesses, employers, and individual residents of households to voluntarily provide information for statistical purposes only, they have a right to expect that that information will be used for statistical -- to expect that the information will be used for statistical purposes only. And if this bill, if enacted into law, would add subsections to the Department of Labor's enabling legislation, provide statutory protection to protect the confidentiality of private information collected for statistical programs. And we also have a letter of support from Bureau of Statistics and Plans. And so, I -- again, I thank my colleagues for expressing some concern, and I hope that those concerns have been addressed, and that the understanding is that it's only when businesses or individuals are participating in government reports or surveys, those statistical informations be held with the utmost confidence that it would be -- it would not be subject to the open government law. And it's not moving away from anyone's desire to be transparent, but actually protecting the public's right, that the information they provide to help guide the government in terms of development of public policy, certainly will not be shared with others, whether other businesses or other members of our community. So, thank you for the opportunity to present Bill 434 on behalf of its main sponsor, and again, on behalf of its main sponsor, I request support for this bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. So, on the motion, then, to send 434, then, to the third reading pile, without any objections, so ordered. Senator Tonyada, you're recognized for Bill number 438-31.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move that Bill 438-31, we move to the third reading pile. I'd like to speak on the motion.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 438-31 is an act to add a new Section 5220 to Chapter 5 of 5GCA relative to posting of IFBs and RFPs online. Madam Speaker, currently, right now, whenever an agency, a procuring agency, issues an IFB or RFP, the individuals that wish to bid on these RFPs or IFBs would have to go to the procuring agency or to DPW or GSA and pick up a bid packet. Then, they would be able to determine whether they would want to bid on that process or not. And what Bill 438-31 does is just to ensure that all RFPs and IFBs are posted online. And that way, we give the public -- we'll be able to get more bidders that are interested who would like to see what's being up for bid, a chance to go through the agency's website and get this information. So, hopefully, that with the support of my colleagues, that we'll be able to ensure that we opened all avenues of communication with the governments and with the private sector to ensure that they be able to -- those that are interested in doing business with the government, that they'll be able to put it -- place in their bids, or be able to see what is coming up for bid in our government. And this doesn't take away any of the procuring agency from making any physical or digital copies and assessing a reasonable fee from it, as long as it's consistent with public law. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the motion, Senator Duenus, you're recognized.
Thank you for the opportunity, Madam Speaker, to rise in full support of Bill 438-31. Madam Speaker, a little over a month ago, when the good senator from PD introduced legislation, when it was discovered that an item to be procured was in excess of perhaps even 1,000% in cost, that Public Health was procuring in order to save the government funds, it generated a lot of discussion in our community, and generated a number of calls to my office in terms of the ability to participate in the procurement process of the government of Guam. And one of the calls, an individual indicated how much he really appreciated this bill because of the fact that this gave an opportunity for businesses that are emerging, that are seeking opportunities throughout the procurement process, to actually now get and retrieve these opportunities online, because a lot of them are seeking suppliers, Madam Speaker, off-island. And through doing the business in this way, it's one step less that they have to do to encourage the vendors that they're dealing with, and the suppliers that they're dealing with on the mainland, to participate with them, and them being a local company, being able to facilitate and to grow the distributorship on our island, and continue to foster opportunities for small business. So, the callers that -- the calls that came in to me, Madam Speaker, afterwards, I was able to discuss with those constituents that Senator Tonyada had a bill that will increase the opportunities and the visibility and the ability to really go beyond just the scope of Guam in terms of the opportunity to provide goods and perhaps even services to our people based on using up-to-date, modern technology, and being able to use that forum to make it affordable, understandable, good communication, and continue to spur on and build additional business, Madam Speaker. As a matter of fact, that was one of the constituents that called that said, you know, "This perhaps is the vehicle by which we create more competition for commerce," because of the fact that it's transparent, and it's accessible, and it opens up a whole new avenue of opportunity for procurement and providing more business opportunities for our people. So, Madam Speaker, thank you very much for allowing me to speak on this bill, and I hope the rest of our colleagues can also support Bill 438. Sidoos Masi.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, Senator Munia Barnes, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on this bill. I don't have any problems with this bill, Madam Speaker, or at least with the intent of the bill, but I just want to ask the author, if I may, if the concerns from attorney John Brown that was submitted in the committee report, were those concerns addressed in changing the sections of 5220 of 5GCA to be transferred to Section 5260? And I just want to ask, because he does bring up some concerns, and the full intent, I guess, from the author was not to change the intent of the procedure, what exists today, but to make sure that the invitation for bids are put on the Internet. So, that's the main question first, and if any of these changes were looked at.
Senator, do you yield to the question?
Yes, Madam Speaker. The intent is just to place the IFBs, RFPs, online, so that they're posted also online.
Okay, so, with the intent from one of the constituents that was at the public hearing or turned in written testimony to the effect, have those amendments been considered?
But --
Maybe I can ask -- maybe I can ask the vice speaker to -- maybe I can yield that question to the vice speaker, based on him hearing this, Madam Speaker?
Mr. Vice Speaker, do you yield?
Yes, I yield, Madam Speaker. I expect a letter to be received by the legislature from the governor's office, either today or tomorrow, asking the legislature to have a moratorium on amending the procurement statutes because earlier last year, we passed the Procurement Council, and they have been meeting the last several Fridays, and they would -- they have -- are respectfully requesting that we have a moratorium on procurement statutes, amending the statutes, to give them a chance to look at the whole thing, to bring in a wholesale amendment to it. But the posting would be no problem. That's why it was just posting on the Internet without changing any numbers or doing anything else, let them come back and say, "All these numbers need to be changed." All we wanted to do was to bring ourselves into the 21st century, rather than having tons of paper that people have to pick up for them just to be able to see that it's on a website, and they can make all of the numerical and statutory numerical changes from the council in -- as a group, as opposed to us doing it piecemeal.
Senator, could you answer your question?
Thank you, Sidoos Masi. Madam Speaker, I do truly appreciate the comments from the good vice speaker because then that just gives a clarification of how this bill -- of how my support for this bill will move forward. So, I just want to say for the record, based on that information, then I do support Bill number 438-31. Senator Masi.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, Senator Tom Ada, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, I, you know, I think the idea behind the bill is fine. I do have some concerns with it. One is that maybe there needs to be a qualification put in here that what is posted on the website may not necessarily be the complete information that is needed for the bidders to submit their bids. There may be some attachments to that bid document that may not lend itself very well to being scanned and, you know, converted electronically. So, it would seem that maybe the purpose of publishing an electronic publication of the IFB or RFPs is really more of an information piece, that you have an agency, that's -- you have the Mass Transit Authority that wants to put out a bid for 10 buses or whatever, and really, if you want more details, you need to go get that packet from GSA, because all the line agencies, I guess, with the exception of the utilities, they actually go through GSA. So, I'm concerned that, you know, we give the impression that what you see on the website is everything that you need to know to submit your RFP, and that may not necessarily be the case. The other concern that I have with this is that now we're requiring that in the case of the agencies that have to go through, for example, GSA to issue an RFP, is that GSA is going to put up on their website a copy of this RFP. And we're also requiring the agency that's actually wanting to procure the services or the supplies to also have it on their website. And it's kind of like, you know, the difficulty, the dilemma that you have when you're trying to maintain two books, two accounting books. Somebody makes a change in one book, but either forgot or said, "We'll make a change on the other book tomorrow," and next thing you know, they're out of sync. And so, I'm just concerned, and I don't know, maybe the author can -- maybe the author can, if the author would yield, maybe provide some assurance as to how do we address those particular concerns?
The question?
Yes, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Madam Speaker. I believe that, you know, when RFP or IFB is generated, it's generated on the computer. So, all -- everything that is on the computer, or everything that was generated for that RFP or IFB should be placed online. And as for the part of any changes, if you look at the -- on page 1, line 15, it says that "GSA DPW shall provide notice in each IFB announcement that recommends that prospective bidders or respondents register contact information with the agency to ensure that they receive any notices regarding any changes or updates to the IFB or RFP." So, there's things in place here that will ensure that any changes to the IFB or RFP will be -- that the bidder will be able to receive. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And so, I think the author has, you know, satisfactorily responded to the issue about the question of maintaining two different books, and I guess that will be addressed by, if I'm a serious bidder, I need to register, and so that if there's any changes, then I get a copy of that. But to the question of, we're assuming, then, that every attachment in that RFP can, in fact, be -- lends itself to being digitized, I guess, is that the assumption that is being made? And if the author would yield on that?
Senator, do you yield to the question?
Yes, Madam Speaker. I believe that, even though all documents that are generated, like I said, are generated by the individual that's inputting it to the computer, all it is is taking that information now and placing it online. So, they'll be able to digitize it and place it online as needed.
Senator, could you answer your question?
Okay, well, if the author is confident that he can digitize everything, then I have -- I can't offer anything to say otherwise, other than that's a concern that I have. So, thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator Ada. On the motion, Senator -- Vice Speaker, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of the bill. This is a really good step forward, and I'm hoping that the Procurement Council, when it does finally send something down on amending the entire procurement statute, does something where there can and should be a website in the government that has all of the IFBs and RFPs that are being considered or proposed by any of the government agencies. Because it seems to me unreasonable to expect somebody in the business community to go to 50 different websites to try to figure out which agency is doing what. So, it just -- at some point, I'm hoping that there will be one central website where everybody puts -- sends in their notice that can be linked back to their department, that, you know, my office is going to be sending out an invitation to bid for a scanner machine, a scanner from my office, and you can contact my office by calling this number or emailing me for more information. But for them to call every single agency to, you know, "Do you have something coming out in a couple of weeks?" It just opens up to either people talking when they shouldn't be talking ahead of time and getting unsolicited bids, or having departments promise things. If we have Clearinghouse, not nuts in this, but a central repository of all of them with links back to the departments. That's something that's in the future, but this one was a very simple amendment by the author, and I commend him of just bringing us to the 21st century by listing it online. us to the 21st century by listing it online.
Thank you, Senator, and Vice Speaker. Is there anybody else like to speak on the motion? Senator Respejo?
I, Madam Speaker, I too rise in support of the bill, and it might also generate some discussion that when it comes to the procurement of certain goods and services by this government, we can do what other jurisdictions do, that's called reverse auctioning. So, the agency would post the bid online, and then you have companies responding to that bid, and their bid amounts are also posted online. And so, you have this, you generate this kind of competition where everybody knows what that, whereas now, everything is sealed bid. You open up the bids, and you go with the lowest bidder. But in this case, it forces companies to see what other companies have bid for that good or service, and then the government of Guam, after that certain time period, will go with the lowest bidder. So, imagine, if you will, one of the single most expensive thing that this government procures, such as the health insurance plan, imagine, if you will, if they post the RFP online, and then you have different companies responding to that bid, the government can have an idea, and the people can have idea, and more importantly, businesses can have an idea how low they're willing to go if they really want to secure that contract. And so, I want to commend the author and start to try to think about how we can expand on this issue. But thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, anybody else? There being none, Senator Tony Ada, would you like to close? Yes, on the motion then to send 438 to the third reading file without any objections. Going back to those that have been set aside, I would like to ask of Senator Yamashita, you're ready? Senator Respejo for Senator Yamashita's bill, are we ready? We're doing 338.
338? 387.
I mean, 387, I'm sorry, 387.
Is that the last bill?
We were on the last bill, so I'm going back to the set of sites to Senator Duñez and 378. Okay, so Senator Respejo, then you're recognized for a motion.
Chris, do you have a number for that?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I move that we revert back to motions.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, I, at the request of several senators, I, first, I'd like to move Resolution Number 375-31, sponsored by our minority leader, Senator Frank F. Blas, and it's relative to recognizing and agreeing with the desires of the Northern Mariana Islands Legislature to form the Mariana Islands Legislature Association and to establish within the entity a Mariana Islands Cooperative Initiative to explore areas of joint economic development and mutual benefit between the governments of Guam and the CNMI, and I move that this be placed in the second reading file.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The next resolution is 433, introduced by our Health Chairman, Senator Dennis Rodriguez, and it's relative to requesting the United States Department of Health and Human Services Secretary Kathleen Sebelias to prioritize and approve the Guam War Hospital Authority's requests for relief of Medicare reimbursement rates, and I move that this also be placed on the second reading file.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, I want to place a couple bills in this following order. Bill 416, introduced by Senator Pangolinan and Speaker Pangolinan and Vice Speaker Cruz, and it's an act to amend Section 4301.1, Article 3, Chapter 4, Title 4 of GCA, relative to negotiating and procuring health insurance services for the government of Guam. I move that be placed on the agenda.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
And then, Madam Speaker, Bill Number 465, this is time-sensitive in nature, and it's introduced again by our Health Chairman, Senator Rodriguez, and it's an act to adopt the waitlist policy and procedures of the Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse to be codified in the new Division 6 Public Health and Substance Abuse, Chapter 1, Title 26 of the GAW, and I move that this also be placed on the agenda.
Hearing objections, so ordered.
And Bill Number 175, introduced by Senator Rodriguez, and it's relative to rezoning in Dedito from agricultural to sea zone.
Hearing objections, so ordered.
And we have a couple other bills, and we're waiting for that number, Madam Speaker, but I move to place on the legislative consent calendar, and then subsequent to that, in the voting file, from the Committee on Youth, Cultural Affairs, Procurement, General Government Operations, and Public Broadcasting, with Vice Speaker Cruz's committee's recommendation to confirm on the appointment of Jeffrey John P. Abad to serve as a member of the Kaha Board of Directors.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Maybe we can proceed to the second reading file until we get those other agenda items ready for preparation. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. So, we're back on the second reading file. We have now Resolution 375 by Senator Frank Blas.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, move to place Resolution Number 375-31 in the third reading, and I'd like the opportunity to be able to discuss it. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Sis. Madam Speaker, Resolution Number 375-31 COR is relative to recognizing and agreeing with the desires of the Northern Mariana Islands Legislature to form the Mariana Islands Legislature Association and to establish within the entity a Mariana Islands Cooperative Initiative to explore ideas, explore areas of joint economic development and mutual benefit between the governments of Guam and the Commonwealth and Northern Mariana Islands. Now, Madam Speaker, in 2010, this body was visited, and actually, we had the pleasure of then meeting then Speaker of the House, Diego Benaventi, who brought with him a document, a joint resolution from the Northern Mariana Islands, requesting an alliance to be built between the legislature, between the legislative branch and the CNMI and the Guam Legislature. And I remember back in 2010, when this was brought in, there was a lot of excitement, you know, on this thing. Unfortunately, because of many issues that we had to deal with at the time, and what we were going through, it fell to the wayside. Very recently, started to look up and look at the idea of being able, and how we can be able to expand our economic opportunities, not just on Guam, but throughout the region. You know, Madam Speaker, you and I had many conversations early on about regional collaboration. And so, what I did was I took the request, the joint resolution request by the CNMI, and wanted to further expand it. First off, recognizing that, you know, there's something there. There's an opportunity for us to be able to join forces, to look at ways that, you know, first off, how the government of Guam and the government of the CNMI can work together, as opposed to, in many, in some cases, we've been working against each other, with the many opportunities that lay before the two island entities, as well as trying to address many of the challenges that both island entities are faced with. Very recently, I took a trip up to the CNMI, and I met with Governor Benigno Fittial, as well as Speaker of the House, Speaker Eli Cabrera, and other members of the House and Senate in the CNMI. And in my meetings, Madam Speaker, they're very, they were very excited with the prospect and the opportunity that, you know, this resolution and the idea that of not only forming a Mariana Islands Legislature Association, but also forming within that association an entity that would look at many of the opportunities and many of the laws that we have, you know, between the two island entities, of what, one, how we can strengthen it so that we can take advantage of collaboration and working together, but also, more importantly, is looking at some of the ways that we've, because of the laws between the two island entities, we stymie, you know, the growth and the partnership between the two governments. This is a complement to a piece of legislation that was introduced by the good senator from Judy, where are you from, Mingila now? Right, from Mingila, okay? With regards to, and also the good senator from PD, with regards to a review of the processes that we have within our local statutes and some of the regulations that we currently have, and seeing, you know, what are antiquated, what is actually working against us. This helps to expand it by looking at, okay, what are those areas, what are those regulations and those laws that we have in our books that hinder and stymie the growth and the possibility of collaboration between us and the CNMI? This is also, ma'am, the reason why I requested for this resolution to be placed on the agenda. It's timely, because in June, and later on in June, you, Madam Speaker, along with the Majority Leader, and of course, the Minority Member, and hopefully, I, will be attending the APIL meetings in Saipan. And this is a great opportunity to be able to go back and say, well, you know, CNMI, you provided us this request to be able to form an alliance in 2010. We have just recently passed, you know, a similar resolution in forming this alliance, and so that we can start to get the ball rolling. You know, Governor Fittial also expressed to me that in his forum, in the Micronesian Chief Executive Forum, there's a similar movement that he is spearheading and that he's taking, so that we can see how we can create that true regional collaboration, you know, truly looking at ways that we can work together, not just for our economic benefit, but, you know, for the benefit all the way around. We recognize that, you know, we're one Mariana's, we're one Micronesia, and this resolution will help us to start to create that, to form that, and to put that into action. So, with that, Madam Speaker, I'm asking my colleagues for their support, unanimous support with this resolution, I hope for its passage, so that that way, you know, the body, the team that is going to be at the APIL, you have a document that we can go and help to push some of the desires that you yourself, Madam Speaker, had, and with regards to the creation of a blue nation. So, I want to thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the motion, Senator Yamashita, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I stand in full support of Resolution Number 375-31. I, a few weeks ago, I also had introduced a resolution, it was Resolution 405, and that really supports what this particular resolution is proffering, in that I really believe that if we connected, worked closer with our neighboring islands, that we would really be able to strengthen our identity, and I think we're collectively in developing a real potential economic engine based on our natural resources. We had a recent national event where there was a dive taken into the deepest part of the world, and I think while the person spent his own money to do that, I think that we didn't get the kind of attention and focus that we should have as the launching pad for that huge event. As well, I think that all of the items that were mined from the bottom of the ocean is not, whatever is found, whatever is utilized, and indeed, if there's more entertainment resources that will spur into Avatar 2, I think that this part of the island should be given their due owe to that. And while people have opined and said that I'm being very silly and shortsighted in this initiative, I suggest not. I suggest that there are many people who say that we have become very dependent on the economic engines of the military, of tourism, and of our own government, and that it's time for us to really start looking inwards and hear about what we can do to develop for ourselves. And I suggest that natural resources is one item that we can really fully develop. For example, Madam Speaker, coconuts. Anybody who reads up on the health magazines, or anybody who actually goes to the gym these days and takes good care of their health, knows that of late, the consumption of coconut juice or coconut water is something that is applauded and is highly encouraged. In my household, I'm very happy that my oldest son is home for a few months, and between him and my mom, they enjoy coconut juice. But I look at the cans, and these coconut, cans of coconut juice are from Australia, from Taiwan, from Los Angeles, and I often wonder why we can't, in collaboration with our neighboring islands, mine our own coconut fields and produce our own cans of coconut juice from our islands. That's a small example, but it's a powerful example of what we can do, of what we can produce. And so, I really believe that the connection, the collaboration, the working together with our neighboring islands is a very smart move for identity purposes, for heritage purposes, for economic reasons. And with that, I stand in full support of Resolution Number 375-31. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Yamashita. I see next on the list is Senator Tina Munya Barnes, Senator Mabini, Senator Wampet, then Senator Duñez.
Sis, this is Masi. Mr. Speaker, thank you for giving me the opportunity to rise and speak in support of this Resolution 375-31 COR, and I want to take the time to thank my good brother, Senator Frank Blas, for taking the initiative and working closely with our neighboring islands to introduce this Resolution 375-31. Mr. Speaker, I just want to say that I always spoke about us as island people, and I always have said that within this Pacific region, and Mariana's region, though the waters separate us, the oceans separate us, it is through our traditions and values and who we are as an island people that will continue to unite us as one, and together, as we come together as islands united as one, we truly will bring success to our island. When we're separated with smaller populations, then of course, our messages are more difficult to communicate to others. But as we continue to grow, as we continue to look at our resources within our islands, I know that if we work together and bring our values together and bring what we have and what we can produce together as islands, I know that our community will win. So, I just want to say briefly that I do stand and rise in support of Resolution 375-31, and I hope that my good brother can include me in the sponsorship to this resolution. I see that there's no one else here. I too have been working closely with our neighboring islands. So, I want to be number two.
Thanks, Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Mabini? Senator Mabini?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I too rise in full support of Resolution Number 375-31. This is, this is also in light of some, some history that I thought I'd, I'd share. When I was studying the history of census collection of the United States, one thing that I picked up was, was the consistent collection of data of Asian slash Pacific Islanders. And I was always curious about that. And there was, the, the reason being is that there is power in numbers. And with the small number of population of Pacific Islanders, it was thought of back then during the data collection that Pacific Islanders would be combined with, with Asian populations when collecting data. And this reminds me of the kind of somewhat negative impact that, that has on, on small groups of island, island nations. And in this case, our collective islands here in the Marianas. And it's, it's unfortunate that there has been this somewhat divide just by virtue of our, our island or, or country status. This now, this resolution now gives us an opportunity to go back to building this power in numbers by partnering with our, our northern neighbors. I also think that not only is it good because of the numbers, but also they, you know, CNMI or Northern Marianas Islands have a significant amount of knowledge that we may not historically have. For instance, their visitors that they've historically received from Russia, or just by virtue, you know, of, of that business, how to respond to that industry. So there's a lot of knowledge that can be gained from, from, from their history of economic development and vice versa. Another thing is the cultural, you know, a lot of cultural resources are existing up in the Northern Marianas Islands that not necessarily exist here in Guam. And I think that, that, that we as a community would also share greatly with that. But one of the things that, that, that I believe this really impacts and is indirectly and directly related to the changes in how the Philippine Embassy is now servicing Guam and the Northern Marianas Islands. From what I understand, no longer will there be two separate embassy, but there will be actually two, excuse me, one, which is the one that's serving here in Guam. He, their office will be now responsible for the Northern Marianas Islands. And so we wouldn't have to work closely now with them, considering the high population of Filipino citizens that they have in the Northern Marianas Islands. We, we need to learn from them as well. So I commend the author of our Resolution Number 375-31, and I, and I, I want to iterate my full support of the resolution. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Mabini. Speaker Wampat, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise also in support of Resolution 375-31. And I commend, of course, our colleague here, Senator Blass, for introducing it. He is correct when a, there was a, a request, a desire, of course, with CNMI, and a letter was sent to the legislature. And somehow, I guess, we have dropped the ball then when we had prepared a resolution. I'm glad, of course, our colleague had, had picked up on it. I am a member, and so is Senator Duennas and the Majority Leader, Senator Rispio, who are members of APIL, which is the Association of Pacific Island Legislatures. And most recently, in our last General Assembly that we had in Kashri, we have actually then established and made sure that we're able to secure the name, the, the Blue Continent, which actually connects then all of our islands. Many times, people think that the water actually separates us, but in this case, it really connects us. And it connects us to all of the, in the Pacific. When you really stop and think about it, really, is that we truly are, and we would be if we were truly united, we would have been the largest continent in the world, and hence, of course, the Blue Continent. I support this wholeheartedly because it was so very unfortunate, yes, that our families have been separated. And I say families, those that we have actual brothers and sisters or grandparents have lived there. Of course, we have married other family members there or here, and we're only separated, of course, by the water and the government in terms, because of the different events of history that actually separated us. And I'm glad, though, that, to see that we're at least making that step to come together. It reminds me also of, of Russia as well, when they were separated and separated by a wall also in the government, and these are actual family members themselves, brothers and sisters again, separated by a wall, never being able to see them. With us, at least, we'll be able to, to travel there and they here, so, so that made it, of course, a lot easier. So I, I'm just really happy, of course, that, that, you know, we're taking some steps. I realize that there's been the concern long time ago, and, and it's probably the generations of our parents versus the generation, our generation today, and even the generation of tomorrow, who would really like to see this reunification of our islands. And we, I know we need to start small. It's not something that can be done overnight, but there's so much that we share, the same language, same culture, ethnicity, you know, all of those are the same. What we need to actually do to assist each other is primarily in the economic development because we know that our brothers and sisters there are really suffering because of the economic downturn. But in, and, and of course, the healthcare facilities, you know about the retirement, I'm not saying that this again can be done overnight, but little things like this, I think, bit by bit, that we start to chip away and work together and try to assist, will go a long ways. And, and I guess in this case, you know, what makes it, of course, really nice is that although we have the APIL, we would now have the Mariana Islands Legislative, Legislative Association, and that's all we can do, I guess. We're going to call Mila. But we, the legislature has always been very progressive with the start of APIL. We was actually the legislature who started that to, to get all the islands together. And after that, the judiciary branch also started then to come together as well, and with the, almost the same islands that APIL actually is made up of. And then the third to, to come on board is, of course, the Micronesian Chiefs Executive Summit that they're having. So we're starting to see at least the three branches now coming together, but then now, even beyond that, we're branching off now specifically to Guam, of course, and CNMI. So I wholeheartedly support the resolution, and I thank again my colleague. And yes, we do, we will be having the General Assembly in Saipan this summer. And just to share with everyone, it is mid-June, and that it will actually cover, in this case, you know, the Blue Continent, talking about sustainability of our economies. And the theme would be, will be focusing on tourism throughout the islands because of the recent development of the, the Russia visa waiver and the fact that they stay longer in, in, you know, the islands when they visit, that we want to bring in cruise liners to participate in this assembly, to see how then they'll be able to have the tourists not just only go to one place or the other, but actually to experience all of Micronesia, similar to what was done in, in Greece. And remember, they did this 20, 30 years ago in a cruise, is that we started out, of course, in Athens, and then from there on, we went to all the Greek islands in, in a matter of 10 days. So that too can be done here with the Micronesian Islands too, so that everyone can experience Micronesia. So with that, of course, I'd just like to say that I do support the resolution. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I now will recognize Senator Duennas, then Senator Guthard, and then Senator Tomada. And Senator Rispio.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity to rise in full support of Resolution Bill 375-31. You know, Mr. Speaker, in my first term here in the 31st Guam Legislature, of course, we've tackled a number of issues and a number of pieces of legislation and substantive resolutions. And I have to say, in this case, I believe this substantive resolution sometimes has more promise and effect than some bills. And it's one of the reasons why I, I was compelled and desired to rise in support, in full support of this measure. I also believe sometimes, Mr. Speaker, on the introduction of measures such as this, it deserves a reading, at least of a portion of it, and the one whereas that I believe will support a number of my comments. And that is in the whereas, the members of the legislature on Guam recognize that the Northern Marianas Commonwealth Legislature is desirous in establishing an alliance of legislators from the Marianas Islands, evident by the adoption of House Joint Resolution 17-1, calling for the formation of the Marianas Island Legislative Association. You know, a lot of times, Mr. Speaker, of course, in any relationship, there is differences. But it is upon mutually agreed decisions that can be made, and the reaching out of one's hand that really is what starts opening the doors and creating the opportunities for our future. Mr. Speaker, I have mentioned this in a number of different forums, and perhaps because I came from the industry where I worked and loved for 16 years in tourism. As the retiring speaker just mentioned, I believe on Guam and on our region, we have only just begun to scratch the surface of the opportunity of the Blue Continent. It pains me sometimes that we go through discussions and talk about our difficulties, which is important, particularly regionally with some of our brothers and sisters, when really we should be talking about expanding the opportunities for our brothers and sisters, and using Guam as an example, but also using the Marianas and Micronesia as an example of what is right and good. I don't have to look even much further than when I visited as the Director of Department in Youth Affairs the year after I was appointed as a director, to see that their youth policy and their facility in CNMI far outranks what we're doing here and in some instances programmatically, and certainly with regard to their facility. So I look at all these opportunities, Madam Speaker, but, but mainly what you had, had basically discussed. I also look to the debate, Madam Speaker, that we had very passionately about the forest realignment on Guam and the struggling of the entities, tourism, military, tourism, military. But yet you look at this opportunity and you say, it is within the region that the true opportunities lie. As you mentioned, Madam Speaker, and we're going to go up there, and we're going to have a deliverable now to at least sit down at the table when this body passes this resolution, to sit down at the table and say, it shouldn't be like this with our brothers and sisters. As you mentioned, the opportunity for cruise liners, for the fact that many years ago, when a friend of mine was leaving this island, who was a dear friend who lived in the mainland, lived here for a while, and then was moving back, he wanted to do a tour of the Marianas. And I had to say that that was the only second time in my life that I went to Rhode Island. I couldn't believe how much fun I had, just enjoying the natural beauty and the hospitality of Guam 30 years ago. And as you hit the nail on the head, Madam Speaker, as we expand our horizons and our tourism to Russia and China and those who would want to stay in our region longer, the big city is here and we have the glitz and the glamour. But the jewels are also found throughout our Marianas and the FSM. This is a great start, Madam Speaker. And as I said, to me, I've, I've, I've read through and reviewed a lot of opportunistic legislation and resolutions, and I look forward to our visit to the APIL this time, Madam Speaker. I think we're going to start with a bang, just having something that, that, that our body has adopted to really and truly start the conversation on a future that I believe needs to be embarked on immediately. Thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to rise in full support of 375. Sisus Massey.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, Senator Guthard, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm very proud of my colleagues for their reawakening. And I say reawakening because less than a year ago, I introduced a resolution to conduct a non-binding, a non-binding referendum for the potential reunification of Guam and the Marianas. And you know, we have a colleague in the Northern Marianas, Representative Palashas, that introduced the resolution, resolution in his own legislative body. And he kept emailing me here, what happened to our end? Why didn't we act on our side? So I'm very proud of the reawakening, and I'm very proud of my colleague, Senator Blass, for the resolution. But everyone here today has talked about the possibilities of working together on different things, but no one's really talked about reunification. And I think that should be part of the agenda, informal discussions, to explore potential reunification of the Marianas. And I think we should include that in the initial meetings that we have with our colleagues in the Northern Marianas. Because they did their part on this matter, Madam Speaker, but we did not, even though we had a resolution, which would have allowed the people of Guam to begin talking about it. This non-binding resolution of a non-binding referendum would simply tell us, if there's interest locally, to begin talking about this with our colleagues. So I'd like to remind everybody about this, and I'm going to resurrect that resolution and that bill and reintroduce it. And hopefully, we can get it passed so that it can be really a formal discussion item when we have the opportunity to sit down with the senators and representatives of the Northern Marianas Legislature. It's interesting, when the discussions on the military buildup first started in 2006, one of the things we did, and certainly it's reflected in a lot of the communications between my office and the Department of Defense and other federal offices, was to support a buildup that would benefit not just Guam, but the region. And many of us here have espoused that from day one, that what's good for Guam and what's good for the Northern Marianas is, is good for both jurisdictions economically, socially, politically. And you know, ladies and gentlemen, we're seeing some of the benefits of that advocacy right now with the current military maneuvers that are going on here and in Tinian, in the Northern Marianas, very successful maneuvers and activities. You've been reading about how our Marines have helped to clear the airfields in Tinian that have not been used for any purpose since 65 years ago, the end of World War II. That's really a magnificent accomplishment. But here on Guam also, our Navy has been very active in resurrecting Northwest Field. And some of us had the great opportunity to visit Northwest Field two weeks ago to see what was happening. It's astounding, it's unbelievable what they've done there. They've built about 12 new buildings there in preparation for continuous training, warfare training for Marines and Navy personnel, as well as aviation landing trainings and parachute dropping trainings and cargo dropping trainings, all that Northwest Field, a very historical site from World War II. They've cleared part of the runways to make them usable. They've done other things up there. That shows you what can happen when we have a very aggressive cooperative military activity occurring in the community here and also in the Northern Marianas, because the troops here are also training in the Northern Marianas. So as part of this initiative, certainly the military buildup should be a very big part of the discussion. What can we do to reinforce each other's location to best work together on the buildup and build up opportunities? And you know, as the buildup proceeds, I want to also emphasize that I think we have a new tourism opportunity to reemphasize. a new tourism opportunity to reemphasize, and that's historical tourism. Once Northwest Field is developed, completed, and once the runways and the fields in Tinian are reopened, there'll be a lot of historical sites to see, which will attract visitors, probably those that have some connection to World War II, or their children, whose fathers fought in World War II in Guam and in the Northern Marianas. So Madam Speaker, I commend our colleague for introducing this resolution. I hope everyone will again support the resolution and the bill that was introduced last year on looking at the potential for a political relationship with our sister islands, and I plan to reintroduce that as soon as possible. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Senator Guthberts, on the motion, I just saw a name here, Ada, I wasn't too sure which one of the two of you. Senator Ada, on the motion. Senator Tom Ada, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I certainly am happy to rise and speak on Resolution number three seventy-five. I think that certainly the objectives of Bill Resolution three seventy-five, which kind of pushes this body and the Northern Marianas Legislature into the direction of, you know, jointly exploring areas for joint economic development, areas of possible cooperation for mutual benefit, health care, education, public safety. I mean, we can break it down as finely as we want, but all these seem to be really the functions of government. And so I would like to suggest two changes to the resolution. One is, we really should, I think, retitle the title of Resolution three seventy-five to read, relative to recognizing and agreeing with the desires of the Northern Mariana Islands Legislature, to form the Mariana Islands Legislature Association and to establish within that entity a Marianas Islands Cooperative to explore Marianas reunification initiatives. Let's call it what it is. And that is ultimately the direction that I think this resolution is pointing us towards. So let's call it what it is, and that it is really an initiative to explore Marianas reunification initiatives. And in keeping with that, then, it would be appropriate actually to add on page two, after line twelve, a final whereas statement that would read, whereas the focal points of discussion should pertain to the possible reunification of Guam and the Northern Marianas. That is ultimately the end destination. So let's call it for what it is. And so I'm making that motion, Madam Speaker, on page two, to add, after line twelve there, to insert after line twelve, a new whereas provision that would read, whereas, comma, the focal points of discussion should pertain to the possible reunification of Guam and the Northern Marianas.
So on the motion, does anyone who would like to speak on the motion? That's the first one, because I know you were talking about the title earlier, but on page two, after line twelve, a new whereas, that the focal point of discussion should pertain to the possible reunification of the Guam and Northern Mariana Islands, right?
Governments.
Governments.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And so if there's no objections to that and it's adopted, then, that we will include that additional whereas, then to make it consistent, then the title of the resolution really should be reworded to read then, relative to recognizing and agreeing with the desires of the Northern Mariana Islands Legislature, to form the Mariana Islands Legislature Association, and to establish within that entity a Mariana Islands Cooperative Initiative to explore Marianas reunification initiatives. Or reunification of the Marianas initiatives.
Okay, so we'll have to deal first with the First Amendment, which is on page two, after line-
Twelve.
-the first whereas. On the motions, recognize Senator Blas.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, I'm not going to rise as a point of objection, just a point of concern. And granted, that it can be construed, and it can be recognized, and it can be seen that this is all pointing, and it's facing, going down that road of reunification. My concern is that it actually substantially changes, I guess, what the conversation and what the discussion of the resolution, so much so that it may require another hearing. You know, you can look at it as ways to be able to get, and eventually, yes, that's the end goal. But, you know, when you look at it in terms of short term versus long term, walking versus Practicing for a game, starting a game versus winning a game, I think we're at the start of this. And in those discussions, yes, there's going to be the discussions of reunification. But is that, is everything going to be, Senator, that? Is everything going to eventually evolve into that? And I'm, don't get me wrong, I'm one for the reunification. I'm just concerned that this is a focal, this is a start point. This is so we can start to get the discussions. This is so we can start to look at ways, first off, to fix both of our economies. You know, when I went up to the CNMI, one of the things that really struck me were the number of vacant buildings where I used to remember housed thriving businesses and There's a discussion, we've also had discussion here, even up at the CNMI, of many of their people coming down to Guam because these is where the business opportunities are at. I had to schedule my meetings with them on a day when their government was working. They're on four days a week up there. I had discussions with people up there who are saying that, you know, they were working in the restaurant at minimum wage when, two years ago, they were earning more, but the reason why they're staying there and they decided to take that is because they need the job. But I also had discussions with them, how can we take advantage of the opportunities that lay before us, where in some cases, we went at it as two separate entities, that if we combine the forces together, that we can maximize the dollars, the little dollars that we have, and that we could create more opportunities? I'll tell you, one of the discussions that we had is basically looking at how we can combine forces and be together instead of, you know, competing with tourists with the same tourist, with the same individual, with the CNMI and us competing for that same person for a three-day tour or a three-day stay. How can we make it so that we can convince this individual to stay down here for five or six days and experience, you know, have a Marianas experience? So while I appreciate and while I recognize and see that this is where it could eventually lead to, I think that's a discussion that could occur once we start this whole initiative, this whole process. And I don't want to, again, stymie or to muddy, that's not even the right, the proper word for that, or to confuse, really, why we want to get and start to go down this And so, you know, Madam Speaker, I'm asking, please, that we look at this as the starting point for those discussions, for those discussions that could eventually lead down to another discussion about the reunification. But I'm asking that we don't characterize this as that yet. Because I just want us to get started. And I'm going to ask respectfully, respectfully, I'm going to ask that the mover of the amendment reconsider, reconsider that motion. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Senator Blas, on the amendment, Senator Duenis, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, I also don't rise in objection necessarily to the amendment, but I just want to make an analogy and maybe a couple real quickly, dovetailing off of the comments of my good colleague, Senator Frank Blas Jr. If you think about some of the times where we as families, particularly in this part of the world, have our closest connections in our time, it's around the kitchen table, the holiday table, the fiesta table. And I bring that analogy because commonality a lot of times is found in times of breaking bread and mutual benefit. We've heard for decades now, particularly probably within the last decade, a lot of discussion on this issue. And while we're calling it what it is, it's real to say that there are economic opportunities that we share. And it's real to say, when two individuals, two governments, two entities arrive to discuss a relationship or fixing a relationship, a lot of times, it's because of common need, common good. So I just rise to echo the sentiments of my good colleague, saying that I also believe, I believe, much like a relationship, when you're trying to reconcile, at the end of the day, there's something in it for everyone. But when you decide that you're going to walk down that aisle again and consummate that reconciliation, that's the end. It's the going to dinner, the movies, the courtship, wherein you develop trust, mutual respect, and vet your opportunities to truly understand that necessarily at the end, it's not all about the economy, but let's face it, we've got to provide for our people. This region of the world is never going back to be called the tip of the spear, all the terminology that's been used for the blue continent. We struggle like the rest of the world, but I think through our struggles, we've realized something very important, we need each other. And so, Madam Speaker, I would only rise also in and for commentary of caution that we do not rush to the wedding, to the aisle before doing the courtship, doing those important things that establish trust, mutual respect, and the understanding that it's for the common good of all, for our people, especially when we talk about government and what we're doing. So I rise just to make those comments, Madam Speaker, and I'll listen to the debate to decide on whether or not there's merit towards setting this up in a different manner. Thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to speak on the amendment.
You're welcome, Senator Duenis. On the motion, Senator Ada, would you like to close? Oh, so sorry, okay, Senator, we speak here.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I want to commend the two previous speakers for finding another way to object without really objecting. I want to also rise, but this time, to kind of commend the sponsor of this amendment, to recognize the eight-hundred-pound gorilla in the room, and it is what it is. And I do appreciate the concerns raised, if you start off your talks with the eventual reunification of Guam and the CNMI, that might not lead to any discussions outside of that. But think of it for a minute, if you will, the fact that some of us in this body is expressing reservation to even call this what it is may jeopardize those reunification talks, because people monitor what we say and do in this body, certainly our brothers and sisters in the CNMI monitor what we do and what we say. And I wouldn't want to send any kind of message that this legislature, by not adopting this resolution, that this legislature some way, somehow is not in favor of the reunification efforts or even those talks. And remember that although this amendment would authorize those talks, the people of Guam, just as much as the people of the CNMI, would have to approve those discussions, and we would have to be guided by what our constituents want us or not want us to do. And I think that the amendment is harmless, maybe if as a compromise, it could be in one of the resolve clauses, as one of the mutual items that they want to discuss, but I just don't, I just don't connect the dots. And when you want to go and establish a relationship, I think any relationship should end in marriage if that's the kind of relationship you want. The example cited by the previous speaker kind of gives the analogy that we just want to date forever. We just want to date forever, and we just, we want to have a marriage of convenience where when it suits both parties, they would stay in that kind of relationship. But when it comes to proposing and appearing before some higher power or some court or some senator or some mayor to consummate that marriage and make it legal, we don't even want to start to discuss those kinds of scenarios. And I'm just speaking based of- And I'm, I'm just speaking based of, on what the previous speaker said, that we want to have a relationship of mutual benefit and, and the idea of rising, expressing concern to this amendment may actually send some kind of signal to the CNMI that we have reservations. And I, I hope that we can either take a recess and, and, and think about what we're going to do because I, I think we, we want to present ourselves as a body that's inclusive, that's a body that wants to facilitate this possibility of the reunification efforts, as a body that, that in the end recognizes that in the end, the people of Guam and the people of CNMI will make that determination probably through a plebiscite and a binding referendum so we can start those formal discussions. But I think to recognize what this resolution really is, we would save ourselves a lot of time in dealing with the CNMI because if they, if they don't have any inclination toward unifying with Guam and having a regional approach to those issues that affect all of us the most, then I don't even think we can make any progress whatsoever in any other benefit that we believe is of mutual concern. And so, either we take a recess or, or we hear from the mover of this amendment. I just wanted to rise in support of it and maybe offer a way to, like I said, put this in the resolve clause where it could be part of those agenda items or just somehow make some mention that this is what it is and this is, this is what we want to keep active. And so I thank you for the opportunity to express my support for the amendment.
We're going to take then a recess. Oh, you want? Okay. Okay, yes, so.
Madam Speaker, I need to 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 understand a conversation for the resolution for the foundation that the Northern Marianas, the Atan, the Manu, the Paramona, the China, Manu, the Matso, the Minalek is Guam's and Saipan, the Atan, the Manu, the Ben Tisina is Pita, the Benefitu, the Do, she taught Guam and taught, 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 the Northern Marianas. Low Magai Kalana Lem Lemzo, and he proposed that Manasata Organistin who is Marianas reunification initiative, that Kalan Man Spantau, Man Matso Lapun. So I, then I like that, I, then I, I would para out the Monastin. Low Insegao, Zangien Tita Tungo, he Monu para out the Monastin, a conversation, he para the foundation.
The legislature is back in session. And we left off with Senator Ada, so Senator Ada, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I, you know, one of the really nice things about this deliberative body is that it allows us an opportunity to be able to sit down and, and find out where the gaps are and to see how we might be able to bridge them. And in this last moment of recess that we had, we did just that. And so I would like to withdraw the amendment that I made earlier to add a new where as statement and to retitle the title of the resolution. But in doing that, though, in withdrawing those amendments, I would like to make an amendment in place of that which I withdrew. And the amendment would be on page two.
Before we do that, can we just go and take care of that business?
Okay.
So on the motion then to withdraw the where as clause.
No objections.
No objections, so order it. Senator Ada, you still have the floor for another amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. On page two, line eighteen, I would like to make an amendment so that that line reads, "Political Exchanges and Cooperation, Comma, The Prospects of Reunification of the Marianas, Comma, and to examine the possibility of creating a formal entity for these purposes consisting of an equal number of representatives, et cetera, et cetera." So the amendment then is to include in there a topic of discussion amongst the numerous discussions, the prospects of reunification of the Marianas. And does not necessarily become the focal point.
Yes, thank you very much, Senator. So on the amendment, hearing objections, so order it. Thank you, Senators.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Very much. The other speaker then to be recognized is Senator Respechio then on the motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I certainly rise in full support of this resolution now as amended. And I think that every opportunity we have to express mutual concerns in one voice, we should recognize those opportunities and capitalize on them. And certainly, there's certain issues that affect both Guam and the CNMI in relation to our federal territorial relationship. And I think having all groups on the same page will bode well to advancing the causes that affect both of our communities. But I also, Madam Speaker, am a very realistic individual to recognize and accept that there's just some issues that are specific to Guam, and there's some issues that are specific to the CNMI, and we're just, as adults, are going to have to agree to disagree. And one example I'd like to bring up, really for the body to reflect on, on how is it that we're saying that Guam and the CNMI should advance their reunification efforts, but yet there's just some issues that Guam wants that CNMI certainly won't stand for. And the case I bring up is the liquid field tax issue. And how if we were reunified right now, then those taxes that the people of Guam are paying, those same taxes will be paid for by the people in the CNMI. And if you recall, the CNMI, at the time, we were discussing ways to generate our revenue, and the previous speaker was spearheading that. The CNMI was also discussing ways to find opportunities to increase their revenues into the government of Guam. And they were very, very aggressive in doing so. But equally so, they were very aggressive in conveying to the legislature that they did not support that bill that was before us. And so there's an example of, of how if we really wanted to come together and work together and help both jurisdictions, they certainly saw it very differently. And so be it as it may, that issue is no longer before this body. But as we, as we further discuss regional issues, and you're a member of APIL, you're the vice president, soon to be president, Madam Speaker, and Senator Duennius is a member, and I'm a member, in every opportunity we get in APIL, we talk about regional development and things that would help the region, particularly this military buildup. We never called it a Guam buildup, but more specifically, we presented this as a regional buildup where we can get the workforce from, from the Mariana Islands as well as from, from Micronesia. And also other issues such as, and Senator Yamashita spoke about this, the, the resolution that's before us that will, that will recognize the economic potential with the Marianas trench. And when that resolution was first introduced, people just needed to understand what the genesis was behind that resolution rather than, than reacting to it in a manner that was insignificant and a waste of time. And I, I think those comments are very disparaging because Senator Yamashita's effort is extremely relevant and important to recognize those kinds of economic potentials. And I understand when our minority leader went to meet with Governor Fitial that he was supportive of the idea. There's also an individual, Dan Ho, who communicated to all of us via email that he had talks in the CNMI, and they're very receptive to supporting Guam's efforts, particularly the resolution that Senator Yamashita introduced. But what Senator Yamashita did, Madam Speaker, also, also forced our attention in the fact that when President Bush created the Mariana Monument, he did not include Guam as a member of that task force. And so there's a subsequent resolution to do that. And, and we explained that those issues are very important because if you Google China, Madam Speaker, China is laying claim to everything. They're, they're trying to claim Taiwan, they're trying to claim the Spartan Islands, they're in the Philippines, they're also trying to claim a region in, in the Philippines which the Philippine government and the Filipino people are protesting against. And if you also recognize why President Bush did the Mariana Monument designation was simply for that reason, because if you look at a map that DOD produced, and I want to thank our military buildup chairperson, Senator Guthers, for, for alerting our, our attention to this, is that there's a map that shows that in the waters between CNMI and Guam, in those same waters, China is trying to claim. And that's why we believe the Bush administration was very quick to do the Mariana Monument, but yet they didn't recognize Guam to be a member of that task force. So there's certainly issues that are of mutual benefit that this resolution can begin those formal discussions. And in keeping in line with those formal discussions, I have an amendment to add a new resolve clause, and this is, I'm offering this amendment on your behalf. And it's resolved that the Guam legislature representatives to APIL shall use their best efforts at the APIL meeting in June 2012 to begin discussions consistent with this resolution.
On the amendment, no objections, so order it.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And again, I thank all of my colleagues for the very productive discourse on this resolution.
Thank you, Senator. To close then, the resolution, I recognize the author, Senator Frank Boss.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, and I want to thank all of my colleagues. Sometimes, you know, we feel, we believe, we think that some of the easier discussions and easier pieces of legislation somehow always has a knack of turning out to be the ones, you know, some of the most discussed and some of the deliberative pieces that we have to deal with. And this was one of them. Because I think, and it was, and the value in that is because we all have the passion and we all, we all have the desire that we want to move forward. And it's as a result of the deliberate process that, that we went through that made this resolution even stronger. And I want to thank everybody. I want to thank all of my colleagues that contributed to that. Because now I believe that this is now a strong, stronger, this actually represents the sentiments of, of, of the body. And this is something that we can take without conviction to, to APIL once passed, if passed, so that we can start this process, so we can start to looking at ways that we can, we can build these relationships that will be beneficial not only just to our community but to their communities as well. You know, Madam Speaker, one of the motions that I want to make is recognizing too that, I guess, the group of individuals that are going to be responsible now for taking this to the next step are, is our representatives to APIL, which, you know, is led by, by you, Madam Speaker. And I also want to recognize all the different members that helped to contribute to make this resolution, a better resolution. And so with that, Madam Speaker, I'd like to be able to move to include as, as sponsors in this order. You as the second co-sponsor, Senator Respechio as the majority leader and representative to the APIL, Senator Duennius as the minority representative to APIL as the fourth, Senator Munya Barnes, Senator Yamashita, Senator Mabini, Senator Guthers as her request, and then followed by all other senators as, as co-sponsors to this resolution.
On the amendment, hearing no objections, so order it.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, and at the end, I want to say that although I, and I want to thank my staff for, for creating this, the document, this document could not have been created, and this document will not be the document that it is finding, it finally is, without everybody's assistance. This is not just my resolution, this is our resolution. And I think this is a, is a good starting point for, again, like I said, our, in building our relationship, not just within the Marianas, but eventually what we want to see is a relationship, collaborative relationship throughout the region. And it's a great start. I, I do want to publicly apologize to CNMI that in 2000, and they've been waiting for us since 2010, it's 2012. But you know what? Better late than never. We started, we're moving forward. And again, I want to ask my colleagues for their unconditional unanimous support for this resolution, and therefore I ask that this, no further discussion, that this resolution be moved to the third reading.
On the motion to send resolution number 375 to the third reading file without any objections, so order it. It is noon, so we're, but will you be able to? Okay, so we'll go ahead then and we'll call the vice speaker on bill number 460-31.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'd like to move bill 460-31 and as substituted by the Committee on Youth Cultural Affairs, Procurement, General Governmental Operations and Public Broadcasting.
And would you like to speak on it?
To the third reading file, and I ask for an opportunity to speak.
Please proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, bill, earlier this year, Senator Ben Pangolinian introduced legislation, and this legislature passed a bill to try to encourage the participation of more health insurance companies in the health insurance for, for the government employees. We passed that, and it was signed into public law 31-197. After the bill was passed, the Attorney General asked for a meeting between himself and Senator Ben Pangolinian, and Senator Ben asked me to join because he was not going to be here, and because the AG wanted to make some amendments to the bill with clarifications on definitions. Bill 460 is a bill that has definitions that the Attorney General felt was imperative in order for them to be able to get the RFP out for the health insurance policy, I mean, RFP for the health insurance coverage for the GUTBAM employees. 460 initially only had two definitions, exclusive proposal and non-exclusive proposal, and he wanted a clearer definition of what that was. These were the two definitions that were submitted by the Attorney General's office. When I conducted the hearing the other night, the Director of Administration came, and on behalf of the administration stated that they had no objection to the bill itself, but were insistent that there be one more definition that be included in this bill, and it is qualified proposal. And so the committee substituted bill 460 by adding the qualified proposal definition as requested by Department of Administration. So it's a very simple bill trying to clarify a public law that we had passed, 31-197, to make clear what the definitions were of exclusive proposal, non-exclusive proposal, and qualified proposal. And the RFP was supposed to go out today, and they're hoping to get this legislation through so that they can get the RFP out with these definitions included in it. And so I ask for the support of my, my colleagues in amending public law 31-197 with these three definitions more explicitly defining three different words, three different phrases in, in the law. I, I know that this concern is to whether or not we're going to vote for it. I, I'm just, they were going to get the RFP out, and the Attorney General has assured me that he's going to, since we already had the hearing and the administration had no objection to it, that he would include it in the RFP, but that he was hoping that we would pass it sometime soon. If we pass it on Monday, the RFP is going out with these definitions anyway, because I assured him that with the hearing and with the administration in support of it, that these definitions would be clarified so that it would make their work a lot easier. Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Vice Speaker. So on the motion, Senator Tom Ada.
Madam Speaker, I rise in support of the bill, but I would also like to move that in, in view of the fact that it is a time-sensitive piece of legislation, that maybe we go ahead and, and go ahead and go into the voting of this particular bill now so that then it removes that one obstacle from the RFP.
I'm.
I appreciate that motion, and I would, I would join in it. I, if, we would have to waive engrossment, but I'm just.
I, I think that possibly we can do that this afternoon then, because so we can make sure all of our members are here. Okay, thank you then. So on the motion, are there any other speakers? There being none, so bill number 460 then to be sent to the third reading file without any objections, so order it. And we will vote on this bill later this afternoon when all of the members are present. We will recess until two this afternoon, and hopefully we will go into the committee of the whole. And I'm asking, of course, our, my colleagues here to join me next door in the public hearing room.
Madam Speaker, before we do that, and based on what we had agreed to earlier, can I do notwithstanding motion to revert back to motions for the purpose of placing two bills?
You have those two bills already?
I have them, and so that way the public can be aware of what we would be doing this afternoon.
No objections, so order it.
The first bill, Madam Speaker, to which the sponsor, Senator, Senator Sam Mabini, and I appreciate your declaration of the waiver because it's a similar bill, it's bill number 469-31 enacted to add a new 90.48 It's bill number 469-31, an act to add a new 90.48 to Article One of Chapter Ninety, Title Nine GCA, relative to establishing and administering international prisoner transfer program. This bill unfortunately met the veto of the Administration because of simply purely technical reasons. And so Senator Mabini has been able to iron those concerns out, and she would offer an amendment when we get to this bill.
On the motion without any objections, so ordered.
And the next bill, Madam Speaker, was introduced by all members of the legislature. It's bill 468, just introduced, and it's relative to the issue of routed and non-routed roads. And we also appreciate your concurrence and approval that this bill has had a public hearing, and so that requirement has been met. So move to place bill 468 on the second reading file.
On that motion without any objections, so ordered.
And then, Madam Speaker, I move then notwithstanding that we revert back to the second reading file, and then we recess per your call.
Hearing objections, so ordered. But we will also recess then until two this afternoon.